Good evening, everyone. It's Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. This is a meeting of the Sherborn Zoning Board of Appeals. It looks like we have a quorum. Attendance by roll, Mr. Fitch.
Here.
Mr. Labby.
Present.
Mr. Novak.
Here.
Wonderful. We will, first item, business is a continuation of the public hearing on the application of Phoenix Partners Brush Hill LLC for a comprehensive permit pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B. I think as part of that tonight, we are going to hear from the Butters first in substance and then the Butters expert first, Mr. Horstley, and then I believe some other discussion around traffic and Board of Health. But Bob, I'm sure you want to open us up maybe with a few words. I hear you're in a warmer place tonight, so congratulations to you. You're on mute, Bob.
Yeah, you go on vacation, you forget how to use the Zoom. So I guess if it's all right, why don't we do Washington first in that? I did look it up because I thought you might ask about the dates on Washington and just to kind of get us grounded there. Nothing new. But with Washington, we opened that in the middle of February. We took about 83 days and then we stayed it. And we've been in a stay since May the 7th. And for practical purposes, what that means is if and when we start to review this again, and frankly, given the information I have at this point, I think that's reasonably, in fact, I'll even say very unlikely. So I think we're going to end up working with the town in a good way on that one. But we do need to, for the time being, continue it in stay. What I would suggest is that maybe we pick a date in January or do you want to wait until after we're done with Brush Hill and figure out what we're doing there and then pick a date that coincides for Washington?
Do you have a? I think, as I guess cumbersome as it is, I'm happy to keep sort of strapping it to this just until you have more certainty. In a sense where, you know, we can just pick a meeting date as far out as we know we have one.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we've made a lot of really good progress on that front, like I said, so I don't anticipate that we'll need to go back into it, but you know.
So I don't know if we have another meeting already set in January for anything. Gina, do you know offhand, if not, we can revisit that.
We have a meeting January 15th.
Do you want to schedule the continuation until then, Bob?
That'd be great. Thank you. Yeah.
So we're actually going to reopen the comprehensive permit for Washington Street Sherborn Homes LLC. And I think we need a motion to continue that. Mr. Novak. Oh, you're on mute.
I don't have the excuse of being on vacation. I'm just stupid. I move that we continue the hearing for Washington Street Homes to January 15th, 2025, 7:00 PM.
Seconded.
Wonderful. Vote by roll, Mr. Fitch.
Fitch, aye.
Labby?
Labby, aye.
Mr. Novak?
Novak, aye.
Mr. McBride, aye. Passes, so we will see you on the 15th to maybe continue it again. We'll see. All right, so back to Brush Hill. Bob, do you have anything to say about Brush Hill? Before we go to the agenda that you proposed?
No, I think we can go ahead and get started and then I'll, my plan was to give an update on kind of where we were with the Board of Health as obviously as a separate but highly related matter.
Sounds good. Mr. Horstley, are you prepared to share with us some thoughts about this project?
I am, Mr. Chairman, and I believe Attorney Dan Hill is here who would like to start me off if he may.
Sounds great.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the boards. For the record, my name is Dan Hill. I'm a land use attorney. And I represent the Butters to the site at 32 and 36 Brush Hill Ave, Brush Hill Road. And we did submit comments from Mr. Horstley on September 30th. We also submitted a presentation with slides. I believe a week in advance of your meeting on November 19th, as you requested. That meeting was, I guess, taken off the calendar. It was postponed till tonight. So we don't think that anything has changed. I don't see any recent submittals by the applicant from November 5th on. So I believe that our comments that were put in the slideshow on November 5th are still pertain. If it's okay with you, I'd like to put that on the screen because it serves as a nice outline for our comments tonight. Do you want me to share the screen or do you want Gina to put it up?
That's fine. If you're able to, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the goal tonight for us is to really explain what we view as the environmental and hydrology issues presented by this project. And this project, as you know, is much denser than what would be allowed under conventional zoning in Sherburn. It doesn't comply with a lot of different Board of Health requirements and zoning bylaw requirements. And so we want to basically present to you our concerns with respect to the impacts of this project on the environment. To do that, I thought it would be helpful for us to kind of take a step back and provide our perspective as to what the legal standards are in this matter. I'm sure none of this is new. You guys have been through 40B projects before. I think I was involved in one of your, one of your early 40B projects, the Fields, probably, you know, seven or eight years ago at this point. So I know you've been through this, but I just, I think it's helpful for us to at least provide you with our perspective as to how this all kind of relates. And in terms of why this is important, I view the zoning board's role under Chapter 40B as really being the arbiter of waivers. You know, that's, to me, that's the most important role of the zoning board is to look at the waiver requests and decide, do these waivers present any harms to the environment or public health or planning or safety that outweigh the need for housing? And that's essentially the balancing test. That's a legal standard. Any decision you make must be consistent with local needs. And consistent with local needs is defined as being reasonable in view of the need for affordable housing against municipal needs, local needs, which include the need to protect the public health and safety and, among other things, promote better site design and building design. Our view is that is that a Chapter 40B project must comply with local rules unless they're waived and they only should be waived if they're necessary to make a project work economically. There's not, this isn't a blank check. I think there's a lot of myths out there and perhaps other towns that every local bylaw is just presumed to be waived under 40B. It's not the case. Boards only need to waive bylaws to the extent they're necessary to make the project work. And then only if they don't present overriding concerns with respect to the environment or public health. And I like to give the example of a case out of Stowe, the Reynolds case, that is really the seminal case under 40B in this balancing test where a project septic system was modeled by Scott Horstley, actually, and was predicted to pollute the Butters well. And in the appeals court, in the SJC, ultimately upheld the denial of that 40B permit or overturn the approval of the 40B permit on the grounds that public health is not sacrificed by 40B. 40B does not trump everything. It trumps a lot of things, but it doesn't trump public health or safety. And so in this case, what we're dealing with is a project that presents public health and environmental concerns. The combined wastewater flow we know is 1760 gallons per day. Everybody in the neighborhood uses, relies on private wells. But yet this applicant has requested waivers from the Board of Health's regulations, among other things, requiring a hydrogeoevaluation, setback requirements, and the town stormwater bylaw. And now with that, I'd like to flip it to Scott, who's going to discuss the specific hydrology impacts and how they affect public health and the environment. As you can see from this outline, we're talking about the septic system and the stormwater system. Both are recharge systems that put dirty water into the ground and the impacts of those systems on the groundwater. So Scott, please go ahead and take it away.
Thanks, Dan. And yeah, if you could just flip the slides for me, I'll start with this one here. And this is a graphic that I included in my comment letter just to make sure we're all on the same page. Groundwater mounting occurs when you discharge water into the subsurface in general. That could either be septic system or stormwater. But we're going to start with some comments on the wastewater. Title V does require a four-foot separation between the bottom of the leaching facility and the estimated seasonal high groundwater. With larger septic systems, that four-feet separation must be maintained to the mounted groundwater. So that would be the estimated seasonal high groundwater plus whatever mounting occurs during the infiltration of the wastewater system. So next slide, Dan, please. And this, this particular system, and this is an excerpt from the site design plans. And you can see highlighted, there is, this is a fairly large system. I believe the design flow is 1760 gallons per day. And in this case, there's also an impermeable liner that surrounds a good part of the proposed leaching field. And that liner, I believe, will further exacerbate the groundwater mounting. I've included a little graphic on the lower left here, which shows the little, the rectangle is meant to represent, this is in cross-section, the leaching field. And you can see the blue mound beneath it. When we apply the impermeable boundary surrounding that system, basically what happens is the infiltrating wastewater is not allowed to flow laterally. So this increases the amount of vertical groundwater mounting. So I've done some preliminary calculations on this, which suggests there are problems even without the impermeable boundaries, but I, as we'll get to in my conclusions and recommendations, I think in this case, it's imperative that a conservative groundwater mounting analysis be done and one which includes the effects of these impermeable barriers that surround the system. Next slide, please. So again, on Title V, mounting analysis is required for systems, design flow of 2,000 gallons per day. This one is, as I said before, 1760 gallons per day, which is slightly below that level. However, as I included in my letter, there is, there are provisions in Title V for the local approving authorities, which in this case could be either be the ZBA and/or the Board of Health to require that mounting analysis, even though they're slightly below the 2,000. And again, in this case, with the liner included, it would make sense certainly to do that. There's also a requirement, as I think you know, in the town of Sherburne for an environmental health impact report. This pertains to all 40B projects. And that, that environmental health report, as it's outlined in the health regulations, would provide some really valuable information in addition to the mounting or supportive of the mounting, things like groundwater flow direction and additional data on the hydrogeology and some of the parameters such as permeability and other inputs that go into the groundwater mounting. So I think in addition to the groundwater mounting, I think this environmental health impact report would be really critical to support the groundwater mounting analysis and provide the additional data that would be required to do a reasonable assessment of these impacts. Additionally, as the bottom bullet suggests, there are three stormwater infiltration systems that would, according to the stormwater, Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, also require a groundwater mounting analysis. And given the density of the site and the proximity of these facilities to each other, I would expect that those mounting impacts would overlap and be cumulative so that it would be important to look at those in concert because I believe that they will affect each other. And we'll only be able to see that through the environmental health impact report, which would include, again, not only the mounting on the septic system, but also the groundwater mounting associated with the stormwater infiltration systems. Next slide, please. And this is just an excerpt from the Sherburne Health Regulations, which do also require a five-foot separation. I mentioned four feet before. That's the minimum state requirement, but the Sherburne Regulations require a five-foot separation. And you can see here that that is not maintained, given the data submitted by the applicant. We can see that highlighted here. And again, these elevations do not include the groundwater mounting analysis that I mentioned earlier, which would further exacerbate this. So I would say there's little chance that they'd be able to maintain either a four-foot or a five-foot separation. Certainly, the five-foot separation even by their own data. So that looks to be problematic. And as we're recommending, I think some additional data at the groundwater mounting analysis to provide additional details here. Next slide, please.
And just before we move off of this, I wanted to point out that the applicant has given you a waiver list, but has not asked for a waiver from this requirement. So at this point, this project does not meet this standard.
There's also some setbacks in the Board of Health Regulations that are not being met here. There's one that requires a setback from wells to the edge of traveled ways, which we're showing here. It does not meet that 50-foot setback. Unit number one well is the example being shown here, which is about 35 feet from that traveled way. And again, no waiver has been requested from that Board of Health requirement. Next slide. There's also some setbacks within the Stormwater Handbook, which is a state regulatory program. And there's a setback of 100 feet between drinking water wells and stormwater infiltration facilities. And we can see here there are three locations, three wells. The wells number five, four, and one, associated with units five, four, and one. And we've given the dimensions here. They're all substantially short of the minimum 100-foot separation. And this is, this is a public health concern. As Attorney Hill mentioned earlier, wastewater is certainly discharges pollutants into the subsurface. Same is true of stormwater. Stormwater has a very broad range of nutrients, metals, hydrocarbons, contaminants of emerging concern, as well as viruses. So it's really important that these minimum setbacks are required. And again, my understanding is no waiver from that requirement has been requested either. Next slide.
They actually can't be because it's state law. So these are provisions that the developer must comply with.
And then again, Board of Health regs, a hydrogeologic evaluation is required, in my estimation, given, again, the site density, the proximity of things together. It's really going to be critical to get this information put together so that the, so that the board can make an informed decision as to whether or not there are environmental and health impacts. You can see some of the bullets on the right-hand side here. There's a, there's a performance standard that the soil conditions must be suitable. And I would argue that goes beyond percolation results, which I know have been discussed. Soil suitability includes a number of other characteristics. The second bullet dealing again with the individual and cumulative impacts, which I mentioned earlier. And then finally, effect on ground and surface waters. As Attorney Hill mentioned, there are private drinking water wells on the budding properties. There is also a number of wetlands and surface water streams that appear to be down gradient of the development, which would likely be receptors of both the wastewater and stormwater discharges. So as the environmental health report requires, an analysis of those water quality impacts should be evaluated. There are, we have clear state water quality standards for a number of parameters. And both the wastewater discharge and the stormwater could certainly threaten and contribute to the violations in surface water quality standards. So the purpose of the environmental health report, among other things, is to provide that evaluation. Next slide. And then again, just a better understanding of groundwater flow directions. The Environmental Health Pact, Environmental Health Impact Report, as well as the hydrogeologic evaluation, both of which are covered in the, in Sherburne's health regulations, would allow for and require a mapping of groundwater contours, which would be elevations of the water table. There is some of that data that's provided in some of the test pit, but it hasn't been compiled in a way where we can see the contours, which would then show groundwater flow down gradient perpendicular to those contours. The purpose of this information is simply to show which way the groundwater is flowing. We're showing on this map some probable directions of flow just based upon surface topography. But to do this correctly, we shouldn't be using surface topography. We should be using groundwater contours, which is what's called for in the local regulations. And in this case, that would enable the, certainly the applicant, as well as any reviewers in the town, to understand the connections. So what we're seeing in this picture here, in the middle of the site, there's a large stormwater infiltration system. And there are a number of private wells surrounding it, surrounding the entire site. It's likely that some of these wells are directly down gradient from the stormwater infiltration system. We can also see just the edge of the wastewater system in the upper right of this diagram. And it also appears that, again, based upon simply looking at the surface topography, that that wastewater system may be up gradient from the drinking water wells as well. So this analysis, as required by the local health regs and not being asked for a waiver, would provide the information, which I think we all need, to determine the impacts of both the stormwater systems and the wastewater on not only the drinking water wells on this property, but also on the Butters' properties. And I don't know if there's one more slide, Dan. I can't remember. Yeah, okay, just to summarize, follow-up. As I stated initially, we need a groundwater mounting analysis on the septic system as well as the stormwater systems. The surface water body that I referred to just a few minutes ago, according to the mapping that I've looked at, is Coors Brook and its tributaries, which appear to be discharge areas from the site. What I mean by that is its flow in the Brook and the tributary are derived from groundwater recharge on this site and the surrounding area. So basically, what goes into the site will come out into the stream and the wetlands. Again, that needs to be confirmed with the groundwater contour mapping, but it certainly looks like Coors Brook and the tributary, which are regulated under the state surface water quality regulations, appear to be down gradient. So consistent with the town's health regulations, we're recommending a nitrogen phosphorus loading analysis to those surface water bodies. The third bullet, again, the groundwater mounting analysis of the three stormwater infiltration systems and then a cumulative analysis to show how that overlaps with the wastewater mounting, which we mentioned in the first bullet. Fourth bullet goes back to what I was talking about before. We really need to understand which way the groundwater is flowing. We have some estimations that I've already indicated based upon surface topography. But a more detailed analysis of groundwater flow would be required to really understand the full implications. And then finally, all of this information would get compiled, really to inform the applicant as well as the public, concerned public in the town, about these environmental impacts in, put together in this environmental health impact report, which I think is, it's very valuable if the town has this in the regulations, especially a town that's relying almost completely on private, on lot wells and private septic systems. This, this, this kind of a regulation report is critical for a town like Sherburne, in my opinion. And I'll stop there, Mr. Chairman, and certainly answer any questions that you or other board members might have.
Thank you, Mr. Horstley. Board members, any questions? Or we open up, I guess, any other?
Yep, not at this time, sir.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you. Any, Todd?
No, nothing further from me.
Any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Horstley or Bob?
Zach, I certainly would love to make a few comments if that works. If you're, if you've recognized anyone else.
No, I don't see anyone else's hand raised, so if you have.
Great, great, thank you. And I'll, I'll speak to you, Zach, as the chair, and you can choose whether or not you want to pass along any questions I have to the speakers tonight. The first thing is a fairly minor. I think Scott has a fundamental misunderstanding of the Board of Health Regulations with regard to what the definition of a traveled way. As many of us who live in Sherburne have built homes and have common driveways and have wells know, the Sherburne Board of Health requires a setback from a driveway or, as in this case, a common driveway. If it's an unprotected well, i.e. by a bollard or big boulder, something to prevent a car from skidding into the well head. If it's unprotected, the Board of Health requires a 20-foot setback to the driveway. And if it is protected by a bollard or a, or a large, several large boulders, et cetera, then that can drop down as low as five feet of setback to a common driveway or a regular driveway. Traveled way is, you know, a town road. And this has been dealt with many, 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 many times over many years. And so we're clearly compliant with that local regulation. The second thing I would.
Can I ask you a question, Bob?
Please, please, absolutely.
I'm very, I'm very familiar with the well setback. I had to put in a well for my neighbor for me to build my house because their well was too close to my driveway. So I'm very familiar with that and I'm very familiar with the denial that I received from the Board of Health when I requested to protect that well and allow it to be five feet from my driveway. I believe that the regulation states it's within the Board of Health's discretion to issue, to allow you to install those protections. So that is, I think that's a local reg and I don't think I can. So I don't, I don't know that I can regulate the insistence that they give you that protection. That's all I'm going to say.
Well, well, it will be your job, obviously, to provide them the way, you know, to provide us a waiver if they don't allow something that honestly, Zach, they have allowed me to do multiple times in recent years with market rate housing. So I don't think that's something that we're probably going to end up debating very significantly. I just wanted to call it out because that's not an issue. It's something they allow market rate housing to do all the time. I've done it myself multi. In fact, I just got permitted last Wednesday night on a home with a well that is 10 feet from a common driveway. So I don't think that's something we.
If you could just submit that to me, doesn't have to be part of this official record, but that would be just helpful for my application or just let me know what, what date it was in the meeting so I can look it up.
Yeah, it was last Wednesday, December, whatever it was, 5th. But anyway, yes, I can, I can do that for you. And then much more, sorry, much more importantly, because it was a thread that was throughout what both Dan and Scott had to say tonight is the requirement that the implied, well, it wasn't implied, it was stated, their stated requirement of the Sherburne Board of Health that we provide a groundwater mounting analysis, that we provide an environmental health impact report and all, frankly, all of the regulations associated with Section 3 of the Board of Health Regulations. They have talked about this as though it is a requirement. And I would tell you that it is not a requirement for a septic system of this size and this number of homes. And I would ask through the, through the chair. Um, and I would ask through the, through the chair, if, uh, either Dan or Scott could point to the applicability section, um, the applicability that requires us to provide that report. Um, I, I, I actually wrote an email, I believe, to, to you, Dan, asking this specific question. Um, after I saw this presentation, you know, you, you kindly sent around the presentation well in advance of the meeting and we're appreciative of that. Um, I sent you an email requesting, uh, your explaining to me the where in the section three of the board health regulations that it says that I have to provide an EHIR or, um, um, groundwater mounding and all of that.
Can I respond to that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
The, um, the requirement was added to the Board of Health Regulation in 2023. Um, so I, I, it's possible you're not looking at the.
No, no, I, I, I know the regulations quite well. So just quote me the particular, uh, that, the applicability, which, which of those lines causes applicability for this project?
Well, it says specifically that it applies to every chapter 40B application in the town.
Perfect, perfect, okay.
I can send it to you by email.
No, 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 you just, you, you just answered my question. So the only applicability of section three of the Sherburne Board of Health Regulations to this project is because we are an affordable housing project. It's the only reason that those rules are applicable to us.
I'm gonna, yeah, I don't know if that's, uh, the conclusion that the board's endorsing. I don't know if that's the.
I, I'm not asking for endorsement, I'm telling you that is my opinion.
Okay.
And, and, and Dan has just answered my question, which is it is applicable to us because we are a 40B.
Uh, you know, I think that's, that's what, that's your opinion. I think, you know, Dan can.
I would challenge anyone on the call here tonight, Zach, to tell me how it's applicable, except that we are a chapter 40B project. If it's applicable in any other way, I'm happy to listen, but it's not there.
I, I, I hear you, I hear you, Bob. Um, we can, we can deliberate, we can, you know, sort of handle this issue with deliberation.
I think it's an important issue because it was all over their presentations tonight that it's applicable. We have to do all of these things. And I'm saying, under the local regulations, the only reason we have to do all of these things that they both spoke to is because we are an affordable housing project. And I think that, uh, Dan would probably tell us that's not a good reason to make a regulation applicable.
Okay, well, that's, that's your opinion, I think.
That is my opinion, yes.
And, and, and you may be correct, uh, and you may not be. So, um, uh, Mr. Novak, I see you have seemingly, seemingly had something to say. So if you have something to say, great, um, please contribute and then I think we'll move on to.
Okay, I, I was simply going to elaborate on the possibility that the Board of Health used 40B as a substitute for DENTS. And we don't care if it's affordable or not, but they're trying to regulate our DENTS projects, because DENTS projects have higher impacts.
They have all kinds of regulations that speak to density besides 40B.
I'm not asking you to agree with me, you just defy to anybody to come up with an alternate explanation and I can do it in 10 seconds.
That's our reach.
So you say.
Because they have.
I would, I would ask everyone, uh, I would of course invite, uh, some correspondence from Mr. Haverty that would, uh, educate me, uh, on your perspective, uh, if you're still willing to pay the bill for that to happen. So, uh, that would be, that would be helpful for our, our deliberation. So, um, on, on any other points we want to discuss this evening, I think, Bob, can we move on to anything else we want to address? That there are no other questions for, uh, Mr. Horstley and Mr. Hill?
Though, obviously, that was a primary component of their presentation, both their presentations tonight. And I just, I, I don't think we should have a regulation that applies solely to a project because it's an affordable housing chapter 40B project.
I think that would, I, my, my interpretation is that would make it, uh, an unenforceable, uh, regulation. But, uh, so I agree with you. Um, so, you know, that is, that is a matter to be, to be examined. Um, I, I am admittedly, you know, not familiar with, with, with this particular, uh, legal analysis, but it's obviously something I will dig into as we move towards deliberations and so.
Thank you, thank you, Zach. Mr. Chairman, that, that concludes my, my response to the presentation.
Uh, Mr. Hill?
Thank you, I, I, I would be remiss if I didn't just briefly raise the issue that I, that I actually briefed for this board back in September or actually October, um, because I don't think I've had an opportunity to, to talk about it. Um, I don't need to get into depth tonight, but, um, it, it struck me that, you know, it's been at least a couple of months, um, well, not, not quite a couple of months, uh, since we raised this issue and the project still hasn't changed. And from what I can tell, the project doesn't comply with the condition that's on the 1962 A and R plan. Um, it just simply doesn't, doesn't, doesn't comply with the condition. There's, this building's in the no build zone. So, um, I know that Attorney Haverty, um, uh, challenged my analysis on the basis that it's not a land use restriction, but it's still a condition that was imposed on the A and R approval. And this board doesn't have the authority to remove the condition on an A and R approval that was issued by a planning board. Um, and I don't, Attorney Haverty hasn't ever, hasn't responded to that point. Um, I provided the board with black letter law, case law, uh, that, that says explicitly that no one can remove a condition from an A and R plan. And this, this zoning board can only do what the planning board could do under 40B. That's, that's black letter law. Attorney Haverty knows it because he, he was the lawyer on the case that established that rule. Um, so if the planning board can't remove the condition, this zoning board can't remove the condition and that condition sticks. So I, I don't know how this project can even go forward, um, with, uh, the 1962 condition in effect, um, with the buildings in the no build zone. So I just want to put that out there. Um, I'm not asking you to debate it tonight, but I just want to make sure that, that, that issue is still on the front burner.
Yep, I think, um, I'll speak, uh, not for the board, but just for me personally on, on that issue. Um, is that, um, you know, the way I think we've dealt with this in the past is if there's a question of law, you know, we put a condition of a declaratory judgment action on the matter, um, which I think might be the course here if there really is unfortunately a significant debate. Um, you know, if there is not, uh, you know, again, these are, these are matters that we can look into. I know Mr. Haverty sent us the correspondence on the matter as well as you have, and I've reviewed it. Um, we will be getting our, our town council opinion on the matter as well. Uh, we're probably having an executive session, uh, on this, um, in the future. But, uh, that's sort of what I can tell you now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? Questions or comments on the deed, deed, uh, lot restriction?
I'm, I'm going to ask the questions, Zach, that all the non-lawyers in the room have right now, which is what is black letter law?
Uh, black letter law is in theory, uh, you know, law that is undisputable.
Which is actually quite rare.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Sort of taking someone's life with malice, uh, I don't think that there's much.
Thank you.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, I did in fact submit a letter addressing this issue. I will rely upon that letter. I, I think that Attorney Hill and I do not agree on whether it is in fact black letter law that an A and R, um, decision cannot be modified by a subsequent action by a planning board.
Agreed, uh, I, I mean, I, I agree that you sent me a letter, I'm not agreeing with your position. Um, obviously, you know, uh, with the board is in a wonderful position of being between a rock and a hard place on this one. So, uh, we'll just enjoy our, our tight space as we continue to proceed, uh, through this process, so. Um, any other comments or questions?
Well, I guess, Zach, I, I kind of wanted to just bring up a topic tonight, um, more generically. I've, I've, I've heard, um, certainly the neighbors and, you know, the, I don't, I don't feel like the board is really given a whole lot of, uh, kind of impressions to me, but clearly the neighbors, uh, and their attorney and their, uh, hydrologist, um, believe that the project as, uh, shown, um, is not to their liking. Um, you know, we can debate, obviously, and we'll vigorously debate, uh, the requirements of groundwater mounding analysis and EHIRs and, and all of that. Um, and we can debate the, the, the question of the deed restriction, um, at, at future meetings and, and beyond if, if required.
Just to clarify, we, we don't agree that it's a deed restriction.
Exactly, yes. Um, I, I guess where I'm going with this is, you know, on a lot of these other projects, we found some common ground or I found some common ground with the town. This one unfortunately does not have the benefit, um, because as, uh, uh, Scott has mentioned, um, we, we can't, the, the land does not meet the local, um, depth to groundwater requirement. And there's nothing, you know, I can do about the physical characteristics of the land, obviously. Uh, so we can't reduce density by moving all or partially away from a 40B project the way we have on some of the projects where we've had success getting to what I would call a compromise, um, solution that, you know, by definition is a good one because nobody's happy about it, right? Um, and, uh, in this case, it's a little trickier because of that groundwater, uh, groundwater, um, depth to groundwater, uh, issue, uh, and also the, the, obviously the density as well. Um, or the, the, the per acre density of the local, uh, zoning. But I guess what I'm kind of coming, uh, tonight, uh, to folks, both to the ZBA and to, uh, to the representatives and to the extent, uh, Andy and Dennis and, and, uh, their families, uh, want to speak to, uh, the issue tonight. Is there something that does work within the context of a 40B, um, at a reduced level of density? Um, uh, or is it basically a kind of a desire that, uh, the remain, the land remain as it, as it is today? Um, if, if there is a comfort, uh, with, uh, the, uh, experts and, you know, let's say, for example, if I could reduce the density of the project, uh, by 50%, uh, and this is a hypothetical, this is not an offer. Um, and I could move things out of this, uh, uh, area defined by whatever it is, the 1962 A and R, uh, lines. Uh, if I can move structures out of that as it requires and I could reduce the density, could we find a place that we could all get comfortable with a project? Or am I just kind of beating my head against the wall? Um, I'm, I'm coming, you know, in good faith to ask, is there a, a place that we can? Or do we just have to go on for several years on this?
Yeah. I appreciate, I appreciate that. I know I have, I have sort of my feelings, but I, I do, uh, which I will not let be colored by my board members' opinions, but I don't want to color their opinion. So I want to solicit my board members' opinions on that question first, and then I'll respond and then I will, uh, go to the public on that.
Thank you, Zach.
Uh, board members, any perspective there? Rick?
Um, I, I haven't, I haven't looked at reductions. I think reductions, um, uh, that were amen acceptable to the neighborhood and, and seemed to work from a science standpoint obviously be something worthy of consideration. I, I, I really appreciate the thought of trying to get out of the, uh, we'll call it the restriction as opposed to calling it a title restriction. How's that, well, is that acceptable or the, the claimed restriction zone?
The purported restriction, Rick.
The purported restriction zone, okay. Um, I, I. I'm sorry, the what zone?
The condition zone.
The condition zone, okay, fine. Uh, trying to move things out of the condition zone sounds like a, a, a worthy approach. Um, it's pretty big. I haven't looked at the 62 plan in a while, but, and so maybe that doesn't work. But, but the concept of if there's a smaller project with it, with the math and the science could work, I'm open minded.
Well, I agree with Rick.
Uh, you know, I, I thought this project was trending towards, uh, an easier approval than you had, you know, proposed in the past other projects. I thought the scale, you know, this revised scale I thought was on the right track. Um, I think, you know, I have to evaluate Mr. Horstley's, um, presentation, but I think, you know, he, he makes some, some good points that I have to look at deep, more deeply, um, about the size. I think we're, I think a small reduction would probably put you in a safe zone, but I don't know what that looks like from, you know, a, a water mounding analysis perspective, but I don't know if that's one unit or whatever. And I don't know if, to Rick's point, you know, outside of that, uh, condition zone i- is po- as possible. But I mean, you know, I'm not opposed, you know, in, I'm not categorically opposed to, uh, affordable housing. I think, um, one thing I've learned in my tenure on the, on this board is, uh, just, I think, truly the amount of science that goes into this and how much consideration we have to, we have to put into this to maintain, to, to ensure the health and safety of, of the town. And I think, uh, you know, I think I take, I personally take that charge with great, uh, weight. And I think, you know, there's a lot to consider and, um, I think we have to operate on the side of conservatism. Uh, it, it, just that's, that's, that's just our perspective.
So let me make sure that, that you all understand kind of what I'm throwing out there be, be, and I'd love to hear more comments. Um, what I'm saying is, what about if we drop down to four single family homes instead of eight single family homes? And what if I move everything out of, outside of the 80-foot lines that Dan has described?
I mean, theoretically, it seems like there wouldn't be a need for a DJ because if there's no building in that zone, that's my, I, maybe, maybe there's, maybe there can be a septic in there, maybe there can't. Uh, but if there's no building in that zone, there's no need for a DJ. Um, if there's less density, there may not be as the same, uh, groundwater concerns. And so, yes, I think that seems very much like, you know, from a numbers perspective that we're facing, having to always evaluate.
Right, but the, the issue for me, the, the issue for me, thank you, Zach, the, the issue for me is, you know, it's one of good faith, right? Am I, am I going to go and do all of the work? And I'm not saying that you owe me an approval without seeing a lot of detail, I get that. But what I'm saying is, is that I, I need to hear people say, yeah, we can be supportive of that concept. I mean, it's not gonna be, um, it, it wouldn't be, um, there'd be no surprises in it, right? It would just, it, it, it would move outside the lines that, that Dan has suggested, uh, are problematic for his clients. Um, and it would be four homes, uh, they'd be three bedrooms, it'd be a 12-bedroom system. Um, and, um, but I, I, it's hard for me to just go off and spend all the money on coming back to you with a proposal without some good faith indications that this is something that could be acceptable to the board. And, and frankly, I think the board's going to be moved by the neighbors' opinions on the topic.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just gonna, we'll go to the neighbors in a second. I would like to say, I think the good faith is, you know, Bob, I, I thought, you know, the, the project was, looked designed well, it's lower in density, we still seem to have some borderline water, uh, you know, water mounding issues, water quality issues. So, so, you know, I think i- if it reduced density, you know, I, I think, you know, it would be, you, you have good faith for me that, you know, I, I, I think it looks favorable, but I, I have to obviously, you know, take, take what the neighbors give me and, and look what the numbers and the waivers you're going to ask for. If all the wells are now next to the septic because of some other issue, I, you know, but, you know, I, I just don't know what, what's going to manifest if you have to go spend another, whatever, amount of money to sort of redesign this. But I can tell you that, you know, to me, this, uh, this looks like one of the better projects I've seen come across my tenure.
What, what I believe, Zach, is that the waivers associated with this possible, uh, reduction in density on the project would really get down to, uh, you know, and I'm not going to commit to exactly what waivers will be required without a lot of detail, but the, the, the primary waivers will be the depth of groundwater, which I can't, I can't fix that, right? That's the local regulation is very difficult, uh, particularly with this site. Um, so the depth of groundwater, uh, is going to remain. I don't anticipate frankly, any, um, I mean, I, I'm not, uh, as familiar with the brand new regulations on wells and the changes that were made. Um, but this well or wells, I mean, i- if it was 12 bedrooms, it, in theory, could be served by one well. I don't know that that would be advisable and we might dig two. Um, but it stays under the 25 residents, uh, that kicks you into a public water supply. It would be, you know, 12 times two would be 24. And like I said, it might be one well, it might be two. If we got one gusher, it could probably work with one well. More likely it would be a couple of wells, um, to be comfortable. But I don't think we're going to need any waivers, um, from local regulations that, you know, we're now down to a level of density that. you know, I, I think we can be pretty compliant generally, obviously not with the, the two acre, two acre zoning requirement. But, you know, two acre zoning and the depth to groundwater are, are going to be your major waivers that we're going to ask for. I'll say that. You know, we may ask for some other more, more minor stuff once we get into the detail.
I mean theoretically, those don't appear to be showstoppers, but we'd have to, we have to wait till we get there. I'm going to open up to the neighbors, if you don't mind, Bob, and see sort of what their, what their feedback is on your sort of hypothetical here. I see Andrew's hand has been raised. I don't know if anyone else has.
Thanks, thanks, Zach. You know, as, as an environmentalist and an environmental lawyer for thirty-five years, it frankly breaks my heart to see green space like this plow under and have more development here. My wife and I are both strong proponents for affordable housing. It's gotta be sited properly. So when you ask Bob, and I appreciate you trying to reach some kind of resolution here, when you, when you ask what we want, I don't want anything to happen to that site, frankly. And there are impacts on, on the road and, and me, I, every time I drive on Brush Hill Road, I have to come to a complete stop when another car is coming toward me. And especially around some of the blind curves on it. It is a very narrow road. So yes, we have those concerns. Now, also as an environmental lawyer, I gotta tell you, the devil is in the details. And I think it's foolhardy to give you an opinion as to what we think about a, a reduction from eight homes to four homes without knowing exactly what the proposal is. Have someone like Scott Horsley and Dan Hill take a look at all of that. And then you have the information to make an informed decision as opposed to addressing, responding to a hypothetical proposal. So I, I think it's a, a little premature for that.
Thanks, Andrew. Appreciate the perspective. Any other comments? Michael, I see you on off here. Do you have anything?
Yeah, I was trying to find the raise hand thing. Michael, less than fifty-four Forest Street. I mean, I guess the, what, I'm just wondering how you deal with, with whatever size project, the issue of some of the concerns that Scott raises, Horsley raises about the mounding and whether you get, can ever get the depth of groundwater, even under the state rules. And whether in any, whether you're going to reduce the size of the project, which is certainly an admirable bit direction, but whether we're still going to have the kind of information to decide what the pollutant loadings are going to be, or the depth of groundwater, the mounding analysis. I understand there's an issue of, of what we require from other projects. I don't know where the line is about what this scale is that we should require that kind of analysis. So we know whether, what is the nitrogen loadings at the, at the edges, at the different sensitive receptors? And what is the depth of groundwater, even at half the size? I mean, I can believe at half the size, it still might not even meet that. And whether that, and you know, you want that waiver, but I think there's a health issue of, of whether it's going to be only one foot or no feet of even at half the size. We don't know. And whether that information would be provided even with a reduced project so that real health and safety evaluation could be undertaken. Thanks.
Michael. Dennis, I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, thank you. Well, in the spirit of looking for a compromise, we'll may remain open minded. However, we brought up a number of things, the deed restriction, but going back to this, this ability to put up property, build on that site. I did my homework very much as a family on what we did with my property, knowing that, that there were so many restrictions. And to compromise now, I'd have to be very, very convinced that the conditions would be favorable, you know, for everybody involved. So I'll hold back on saying, yes, I agree until I speak with Scott and others.
Thanks, Dennis. Anyone else have any comments? Questions? Bob, I, I guess, I mean, actually, board members, is there anything else that you want the applicant team to address? Rick? Can't hear you.
Can't hear you, Rick.
We figured out how to do this years ago.
No, he's been muted. I guess that's the, that's what happens during associate member. You just get auto, auto muted, I guess. I don't know.
He's muted now.
Left your, the right speaker set. I don't know if something, maybe the right speaker got. Try to call in on a phone.
Zach, Daryl has her hand up.
Right, that's when I think he might be motioning.
Hi, Daryl.
Hi, I, I just want to make sure I heard correctly. So Bob, are you proposing to go from eight homes, two bedrooms each, to four homes, three bedrooms each?
Yeah, that's Daryl, not what I'm proposing. I'm hypothesizing with, with the ZBA and with the neighbors and others on that concept. I mean, the one thing I can tell you right now is that if you tell me that, you know, at four homes and twelve bedrooms, you, you, meaning the ZBA, because the ZBA is, it's their job in this case, are gonna deny it unless we provide groundwater mounding analysis and, and EHIR and all of this other stuff. Then that's, that's a showstopper for me, because it's not required of market rate homes at this type of density at all. I know, because I'm building them. I'm doing this in town right now as we speak, and this is not required. The only trip into EHIR is that we're a forty B, and I am vehemently opposed to that concept. I believe it's not only illegal, it's morally wrong. And so I can say that if, if that's the thinking, that at four homes and twelve bedrooms, we're doing all of this analysis for this project that's not required on all this other stuff we're doing, then that's a showstopper for me.
So I guess, I'm, I appreciate your point, Bob. I think it's been made and we understand you disagree with the application. I, like I said, we'll look into it. I, I don't know that, you know, that's the intent, but we'll, we'll, we'll look at the issue. I, I don't think that I think, I think we appreciate your offers of, you know, compromise. I think everyone, of course, reserve, just wants to be careful and say, you know, cautiously, yes. But, you know, we need the, the, the deep, the, the devil is in the details. And that ultimately is what we're making a decision on. And nobody, of course, wants to be bound to, yes, well, you said, you, you know, you said you were inclined to do this. And it's like, yes, yes, if it all works. I think that's, you know, it's, it's yes, if it all works. So I don't know if that reduction would result in a different analysis by Mr. Horsley, if any analysis by Mr. Horsley, but you know, I, I can tell you, I would remain open minded, assuming that we're not putting health and safety at risk, so. With that, I think to my board members, is there any sort of topic? I know, Bob, I do have to go to a meeting after this year. Okay, so I think we're going to wrap up the hearing tonight, but I wanted to get from my board members, any questions to Bob and any suggestions on any other topics on this hearing? On this department hearing?
I don't have anything, Zach. Thank you.
No, Todd?
No, nothing for me. I think that the, the two main topics that were discussed this evening are really the most germane to our consideration and deliberation.
Andrew, your hand is raised. Do you have any comments?
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, I just want to make sure that Rick had the opportunity to comment on it. He seemed very anxious to speak, and, but he, he had some technical diff, technical difficulties. It looked like he was going into another room to try and, and, and I, I would hate to have this conversation concluded without giving him the opportunity to, to express what he wanted to say.
Yeah, no, we're not going to, we'll give Rick a few minutes for what I think we're trending towards closing the public hearing is where I think we're at as a board, but.
I think you mean continuing, Zach.
Sorry, yeah, closing the public comment period and opening deliberations, so. Mr. Hill?
Thank you. I'm, I, I, I think that Tetra Tech had actually recommended some mounding analysis on the site, and I, Scott, who I think is still here, noted that in, in, in his comments. So Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I thought Tetra, the Tetra Tech engineer had actually thought, said that some mounding analysis was, would be appropriate, particularly with the stormwater systems, since there is, they don't have the required four feet of separation. They have less than four feet of separation. Is that right?
That is, that is correct. So even if some of the local requirements are waived, the, the state standards, the stormwater standards would still apply, and three of the systems don't, because they don't have four feet separation, would trigger a groundwater mounding analysis. So unless the site design comes back, we're, and as, as the applicant has already mentioned, this site is challenging with depth of groundwater. So I guess the challenge would be not only to reduce the number of units or number of bedrooms, but also find places that are deeper to groundwater such that the stormwater systems can have that four feet separation. If they don't, then the state requirement is to do the groundwater mounding analysis.
Just, just to clarify what I said, Scott, since you said I said something. What I said was, it was challenging within the context of the local five feet of, of separation. I did not say it was challenging within the context of Title V. And in fact, what the peer reviewer said was that under Title V, the groundwater mounding calculations and analysis were not necessary. The, the peer reviewer clearly said that, and the peer reviewer clearly also said that the system was Title V compliant.
Mr. Murch, I think you're misunderstanding. I'll be even clearer. We're talking about the stormwater systems, not the Title V system.
Well, when you were talking about depths.
Pause for a second. Rick, are you back online or can we hear you?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? Okay, so something happened with my firm laptop. I just rebooted everything. Sorry for the interruption.
No, no problem. Thank you for rejoining. I was soliciting any suggestions from our board as to other topics. They want the applicant team to address or present in this part of the hearing. Rick?
Well, I, I, you, you may have covered this, but I think the, the issue of groundwater offset sounds like a key one. Yeah, Bob and his team may be surprised when we say that. We are obliged to respond in good faith to any change. You know, that's our job. And if the neighbors don't like it, that's informative to us, but our job is to, is to follow the law and the statute, even if the neighbors hate it. And we all know that. We don't like it. But so I think, well, I think the answer, Bob, is we'll do our job and we're glad to see anything that, that might work.
Thank you.
So I think because Bob has to go to another meeting on probably this very topic, we are going to maybe just continue this. Bob, is that good for you? I'm not going to close the public comment period at this point. We'll just maybe, we may.
I'll stay, I'll stay on as long as this hearing is open. I, I, I like to participate fully in my own project hearings.
You know, I was going to close, I was going to, going to wrap, sort of wrap this up.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. No, no, I'm fine. Yeah, I thought you were saying I, I would leave and you would go on talking about the project.
No, we will continue. We will continue this hearing through another, another day.
Great, perfect. Okay, shall we, shall we figure that or shall you figure that out really?
Yes. Gene, what else is on the fifteenth? I know we've got a sort of stacked calendar.
The continuation of forty-one. And there, I, there'll be at least one finding, the forty-two Whitney Street one and possibly twenty-six Maple.
We're doing another day. Bob, do you have another preferred day? January, as you know, January is kind of tough, so it'd probably have to be the week after that. Or we could do something.
Yeah, I, I think we should maybe do something if it's possible earlier. That's a long time.
Yeah, it's a long time.
Here, here's, here's what I'm thinking, Zach, on this project is that, so I'm going to need to, if you're, if you're not going to have another one in December, we need to give you an extension because you're, you're out of there six months.
I can do another one next week. I, I mean, I could do another one next week, but I don't know what the rest of the.
Well, I don't, I, I don't think we're going to have time to, to do that. I was thinking maybe something like the first week of January.
I could do.
The first full week, Bob, or the first?
The first full week of January, yes. Yep.
So somewhere between the sixth and the tenth.
Yep, yep.
What does that week look for everyone else on the board? Good? The whole week? All good?
First half of the week is a little complicated for me. I'm traveling, but Wednesday, the eighth is open.
What's mountain, mountain time is two hours behind us, right? Yeah, I think.
Yep.
I could do the eighth at seven eastern time.
That works for me.
If we can try to keep it to just an hour.
Rick and Jonathan?
We could start at eight to move it, move your impact in the mountains to six, Zach. No, it didn't work, okay.
Rather start at five o'clock and be done at six, if that's okay.
Daryl just made a point that the board of health is meeting that night.
I don't anticipate being in front of them, but maybe the rest of you are.
What time is that meeting?
They usually start at seven.
Would you earlier that? Would you an hour? Would you at six o'clock? Is that possible on the eighth? Is that too early?
I honestly couldn't, couldn't tell you. I don't know if I'm on my own with the kids or not.
Well, you could just listen with headphones, I guess. We'll do the eighth at six if that works for everyone.
Okay, so, so Zach, just for the record, I do need, I believe, to give you an extension past Christmas. And so I will give you the extension to January eighth. But I fully anticipate we're going to need a little more time, obviously, you know, after that.
Just to prepare for any potential contingencies, I, I generally advise giving that extension a week after the hearing.
Sure.
Just in case there's some sort of a snowstorm power outage.
Sure.
We don't want them to accidentally stumble into a constructive approval. So give them an extra week so that if they had to re-schedule a hearing, there would be time.
Yeah, so January fifteenth, Zach, and with the full anticipation that we'll need a bit more time after that to ramp this up.
What would you, what are we, agenda wise, any suggestions for the eighth, for the hour that we will be rejoining each other?
Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm going to try to get something out to you on this new concept because it sounds like there was some receptivity. And so I would assume we'll want to talk about the changes, you know, that night.
Probably focus, I, I, I may, may be obvious, but I'd probably focus on gallons per day and, you know.
Well, I know what that's going to be. It's going to be thirteen sixty. It's twelve times one ten.
Probably offset, probably offsets if you're going to be outside of the condition zone, right? All the big, all the big items. I don't know how, that's a good half a day of desk work, but you could probably put, you know.
Well, it's an engineer, yeah, obviously the engineer will be doing the work, not me.
Right, no, no, yeah, not you, no.
Just to clarify, Bob, that's one thousand three hundred and twenty gallons per day.
One, one thousand three hundred and twenty gallons is, is what I'm putting out there as a, as a concept. And I'll try to get, obviously, I, I don't, I'm not going to get that to you a day or two before. I'm going to do everything possible to get it to you to give you multiple weeks of time, because if we can get Tetra Tech, I don't know what their holiday schedule is like, right? But we're going to want them to take a look at it in advance of the meeting on the eighth also. But maybe Jeannie can talk to Steve about their possible, you know, their availability for doing that.
I think he's going to be pretty swamped from the last meeting, so the sooner the better for him. I think he's gonna be pretty swamped from the last meeting, um, so the sooner the better for him.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, I I'll make a real effort, obviously.
Focus on the showstoppers, um, if you have to, we'll take a second pass at the next level, so.
Yeah, okay, good, great.
Uh, Michael, your hands raised?
Yeah, um, Michael Less, at this time, I'll sort of speak as the Conservation Commission co-chair, uh. I guess on the stormwater side, I mean, I know there's some controversy about the septic and what applies and doesn't apply at the scale. But I guess I would just wanna bring up that maybe everybody should go back to the Tetra Tech review of October seventeenth, the stormwater. And the kind of things they require for the stormwater standards, uh, which is something that'll come back. Uh, if uh, to the Conservation Commission, if it doesn't get fully addressed here. Um, so, uh, that's all I wanted to make sure clear, that there are a number of points raised there with different standards, that needs some additional work.
Well, I don't believe, Michael, the stormwater does go to you, uh, um, that that comes through ZBA, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul. That stormwater doesn't get reviewed by Concom under the local regs, it gets reviewed ZBA.
Regs, if they have jurisdiction under the Wetlands Protection Act, then they would be reviewing the stormwater, yes. Right, and we would have some jurisdiction, depending on your design.
Now, no, well, now, keep in mind, obviously, to go from eight homes to four homes with substantially less asphalt, substantially less roofs, all of that. It's gonna completely change the stormwater design.
Oh, yeah, right, fine, I'm just saying that, given that the previous analysis didn't cover certain things, just wanna make sure the new analysis does cover the kind of things that.
I can assure, I can assure you, we will, we will bring forth a compliant system, and to the extent that Tetra Tech has. Ideas about how we can improve it, we'll work on that with them for sure.
Wonderful, thank you, uh, Michael and Bob, um, I think we're in need of two motions, uh, I think we need a continuance and an adjournment after that. Unless there's something else, Mr. Novak.
Chairman, I humbly suggest that we, or humbly move that we extend this hearing to January eighth. Uh, twenty twenty-five, Wednesday night at seven PM Eastern Time. And uh, if that motion passes, we immediately thereafter adjourn.
Six PM.
Six PM, six PM. That's my motion, six PM Eastern.
I second that motion.
Great, vote by roll, Mr. Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Lobby?
Lobby, aye.
Novak?
Novak, aye.
Right, I, uh, we'll see you on the eighth at six, um, do we need to vote on the extension? Uh, you gave us, Bob, you're sort of extending to the fifteenth, uh, it's good hygiene, Mr. Novak?
I I hereby move that the, before we adjourn, I hereby move that we accept an extension. Um, to be delivered to the chair by council for the applicant, um, to January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Seconded. Uh, vote by roll, Mr. Fitch?
Aye.
Lobby?
Lobby, aye.
Novak?
Aye.
Wonderful, and last motion of the evening. Motion to adjourn, can I get a second?
Thank you, happy season, everybody.
Second.
Seconded.
Great, great, great and safe holidays to everybody.
Are you waving goodbye? Is that what you're doing? Oh, enjoy the warm weather, uh, see you soon, uh, motion, uh, meeting will be adjourned, uh, pitch?
Aye.
Uh, Lobby?
Lobby, aye.
Novak?
With great pleasure, aye.
Wonderful, my pride, aye, meetings adjourned, we'll see you, uh, it looks like on the eighth.
Go. Night.